I call the meeting to order. So this is the June meeting of the City of the Whole Administration and Finance for the Township of the Veteransburg Cardinal. And the next thing that I'll do is ask for approval of the agenda. Be a mover and a seconder. Councillor Barrett moves, and I need a seconder to approve the agenda as presented. Deputy Mayor Taylor. Discussion, if any? additions? Hearing none? Those in favor? Motion is carried. The agenda is approved. Item number three on the agenda is disclosure for community interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening? No disclosures. And before I go on, I'll just indicate that Councillor Smale has just notified us and extended regrets that she's not going to be able to be in attendance this evening. But I just wanted to note that she did express regrets. So item number four on the agenda is business arising from the previous Administration Finance Committee meeting? If any? Any business arising? I don't think I flagged anything. Okay, hearing none. About to move on to delegations and presentations. We have none this evening. And going on to item six is the discussion items. And again, we have no discussion items on the agenda for this evening. So I'm at item number seven on the agenda. And seven A is the United Counties of Leeds and Granville Vacant Unit Rebate Program. Now, vacant unit rebate program is, as you can see from the briefing note, seems to be widespread agreement among the county treasurers that it is time to terminate the program that is not being well-used. There's a, in addition to the briefing note, the deputy clerk has put a piece from the County Council meeting of June the 5th on everybody's place sitting here this evening. And you can see that at the County Council, the recommendations coming forward from staff were that the report on the vacant unit rebate program be received, and that the staff be directed to proceed with the proposed business community engagement campaign, and then that the staff report back on the stakeholder comments by October. Now, that recommendation was passed at County Council, so that's why you're seeing it on tonight's agenda. So it's up for the, a little bit of a, it actually is an information item, but if there's anybody who wants to make comment about the program, now's the time to register them, because I think it's fair to say that this program will come to an end probably around the end of 2020. Comments, any? Go ahead.
Question?
Yeah.
If it's, if the Act required that there be a rebate program, is it new Act? Take it away.
I'm gonna let the CIO answer that. I'm not just sure that the Act required it or made it optional.
Just his background says it. It required, Section 364 requires that all municipalities provide a property tax rebate.
Yeah, I can't speak to what Mrs. Huffman did as far as research goes, but perhaps the treasurer could answer that question.
Through the chair, the rebate program is something that is bylawed by either a single tier or upper tier to determine whether they're offering that rebate program or not. And the new legislation has given you a chance to, the municipalities to opt out of that programming.
It's a change.
So it is a change in the new legislation.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I may, I just, just from reading the briefing notes, I think the both of the were presented. It seems that it's, we aren't really hard yet by it, but we started over, I think, in 2013, six, six enough category, now we're down four. But it seems to be the same people consistently, and it's kind of taken advantage of the issue rather than, you know, doing something to enhance the properties. And it, I think it's, it has merit, and it's, if you're not talking about an instant phase out, but you're talking about a 2020 after the next round, the phase end of the new impact assessment of 2020, right after the four years. So they're gonna be given public, we, public notification and process, and they'll be given input, and it's, it's right in the phase up, so I don't think it comes as a big surprise.
No, I think you're right. And no question about it, it's, it's, it's usefulness. Okay, clerk will move those comments, and we'll move into item seven B on the agenda, which is the PSAB Public Sector Accounting Board Budget Addendum. And again, this is a requirement under the Act where we bring the cash developed budget, if I can put it that way, into line with PSAB requirements. And there is a recommendation in the briefing note. Chair's looking for a mover and a seconder to get the recommendation on the table. Moved by Councillor Morrell. Seconded by Councillor Barrett. Okay, the recommendation is on the table, up for discussion. Discussion, if any? And hearing none, I'm about to call a question on the recommendation. Those in favor? Motion is carried. And the next item on the agenda is item seven C, the Main Street Revitalization Initiative Funding Agreement. Now, I'm told that we've received the money already, but we haven't authorized the agreement. We haven't received the money. Okay, this was an announcement from AMO convention, was it not? Or Roman?
It was AMO.
Was it? No, it must have been Roman.
Yeah, it was Roman.
In February.
In February, yeah.
Yeah. And we had the amounts, and we know what amount we're gonna be receiving, so now we need a, what do we need? We need a bylaw to execute the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so on the second page of the briefing note, we have a recommendation that basically authorizes to sign the bylaw. So I have a mover, Councillor Barrett. A seconder, Councillor Morrell. You felt you were gonna have to keep up here. First, we'd have to wake up. Well, I wasn't gonna go there. Okay, so the recommendation is that council pass the bylaw to enter into a funding agreement in order to enable us to receive this money. There a discussion, if any? Deputy Mayor?
The amount at the back is a, there's, I just, there's no comma to indicate forty-three thousand, but there's four numbers after the periods. So, I mean, if the allocation is forty-three thousand, nine, twenty, thirty-seven rounding up, can we just make sure we don't end up with a comma going in the wrong place to period it sometimes?
What page do you want?
Schedule A.
Page fourteen, right? Oh, yeah. What is the?
That's just an odd way for them to put the number down.
You're right.
The problem is in tough shape when it's getting to the last thousandths of a cent.
We eliminated the penny.
So what is it, what is the problem?
Thirty-seven cents.
Is it, is it forty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars?
That they're giving.
Nine hundred and twenty. Sorry. I'm sure it's just nine twenty, but this was, this was not a, what can I say, a correctable document, so we'll have to confirm that.
Yeah. Oh, it's, this is in their document to us?
Yeah.
Oh my goodness.
That's what scared me.
It was computer-generated, that's all.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, any further discussion before I call a question on the recommendation?
You're welcome.
Hearing, hearing done? Those in favor of the recommendation on the floor? Motion is, the recommendation is carried. Motion to approve the recommendation is carried. And so then I'm at item number seven D, which is the Pregnancy and Parental Leave for Members of Council Policy. And as it indicates, the Act now requires that we adopt a policy to address this issue of pregnancy and parental leave for members of council. And the staff has given us a draft and recommendation, looking for a mover. I have Councillor Barrett moving. And a seconder, okay, Mr. Bradley. The committee recommend the council adopt Pregnancy and Parental Leave Policy for Members of Council. And Schedule A is the bylaw. Any comments on the bylaw, the proposed draft bylaw? Go ahead.
Just the amounts that have been pulled in at the front, that's just what you would receive normally for a twenty-week period, right? So there's no increase or decrease, or it's all the same?
If I may, through the chair, the, there are potentially municipalities that would make it an unpaid leave, but because our past practice has not been that, that's not what I recommend.
And through, Mr. Mayor, for a member to receive that, would they still be able to collect employment insurance from their, if they had another job? Can they get, can you get paid one place and not get paid at the other place? Or would that get deducted from the total amount of their insurable claim?
I expect it would be deducted from the total amount of the insurable claim, but we can certainly research that. It would be under the employment insurance.
But just going back, is the purpose of this bylaw not, not to, is it not the purpose of this bylaw to recognize the fact that, that they're going to be away for parental leave, they're gonna be away from their, their council duties on parental leave, and we're making them whole on their council honorarium, which is not a wage? The reason I'm saying that is that whether they're employed or not employed, I don't think it affects either. At least it shouldn't.
Oh, no, I don't think that was council's intent, just, just that if a person was on EI as a result of parental leave, would the continued income from the honorarium affect the amount of EI they were able to claim? And my understanding of the EI system is that yes, if you have income from another source, you claim it, and it's adopted from your EI.
But it's not really an income, it's an honorarium.
It doesn't matter if there's dollars in or dollars in when it comes to EI.
They, they really believe that any amount of money that comes in should be taken away from your EI.
Okay, so you're gonna check that one?
I will check, yeah.
I have two other concerns, if you're finished with yours.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the first is at item number three on the, on the schedule. I'm just gonna read the sentence, 'cause it's, to my mind, it's an incomplete sentence. So, sentence three, it's got a three in front. "A member of council on pregnancy and/or parental leave shall reserve the right to exercise his or her designated authority, if any, comma, at a time, if any, at any time during their leave." If any, at any time during their leave, okay, when I read it that way, I understand it. "Shall reserve the right to exercise his or her delegated authority, if any, at any time during their leave." So what delegated authority would a council member have?
Well, one example that I can think of that might pertain to our municipality is, is the councillor's delegated authority to sit on the library board, or perhaps be a representative, representative to the subnation conservation authority, or
Committees.
Rita St. Lawrence, any of those sort of outside boards. In other words, by, by placing a person on, on a pregnancy or parental leave doesn't reserve, doesn't remove their ability to continue to do their duties in those, in those other boards.
Okay, so in other words, they might be absent from their council duties, but still attend the library board meeting?
They could.
Okay, all right, I understand that one. Go ahead. Is there a question?
Yeah, is there a, I thought, is there a difference in the wording that, that picks up, like, for instance, the city of Ottawa, or, and some of the larger places, consider their, the money's paid to council members to be wages? And the legislation is actually changing, 'cause the honorarium used to be, many years ago, one-hundred percent tax-free, and now it's, now it's, and it's moving towards one-hundred percent taxable, right? So, is this, are they looking at this as a, as if it's wages? When you read the legislation, or is this being drafted with the assumption that the honorarium that council is getting is a wage? And if so, should that not be maybe taken into consideration when we, when we word this? Because ours is definitely not a wage. Nobody lives off of fifteen thousand dollars a year.
If I may, through the chair, I believe, that my understanding is that the, the politics behind this, if I may, behind this regulation is to simply remove barriers for folks who may be considering running for council but feel that they aren't able to do that because of potential planning for, for a family or a potential pregnancy. In the past, if you were a full-time councillor for the city of Ottawa, making full-time living wages, there was no provision in the Act for you to be able to take parental leave, regardless of the fact that your salary was in fact a full-time salary. So my understanding of the legislation is that it is merely to remove a barrier for folks who, who wanna sit on a council who may still be, you know, having children. And as I say, we certainly had an example in 2009 on this council, and the council simply dealt with it, and I'm sure that that would carry on, but the province in its infinite wisdom has required that we all have a policy with respect to making sure that people are permitted to take leave. And I should point out that twenty weeks of parental leave is considerably less than employment standards, which is a full year.
That's true. But does raise a good question, does it, is there an implication of wages?
Not what I'm aware of.
Okay. I have one more clause that I would like to see included in the, in the bylaw as a sort of a fifth clause, and that is that council receive notification of the start and end time of the leave. I think that the council and the public that elected that councillor has a, really a right to know when they're gonna be leaving and when they're expected to back, to return back to their duties. So I would ask to, to have a clause drafted that includes notification to council.
Is there a clause in any of the other bylaws that indicate that if a council member misses X number of meetings, that they are, what, removed from council, or?
That's correct.
And how many is that?
Three months, three consecutive months of meetings with no excuse, like, with no excuses or unworthy, but with no permission from council to be absent. So in other words, if, if a councillor comes to council and says, you know, that I have an illness that must be dealt with and I'm going to be absent for four months, that's fine. That, that can be dealt with. But if it's three months, unexplained absence, and it has to be three consecutive months, not three meetings, three months, then the person gets back to proceedings.
Now, is that a municipal act?
Yes.
It's a municipal act. Okay, so that answers that question?
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that with this, with this township and the way that council works, like, it seems almost redundant that this is even, I know it's mandatory, but I mean, it just, it just seems, yeah, anyway.
This capital works not too badly. There are other councils that are hardworking as functional, let's put it that way.
Okay, so I think if that's, if there are no further questions with regard to this, I'm gonna call a question on the recommendation.
Move the amendment.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming we'll staff take that as a direct?
Yep, and, and if, with committee's concern, concurrence, we'll just add that into the final document that goes forward to council at the end of the month.
Okay, those in favor? Okay, that's carried. Okay, so now we're at item eight on the agenda, which is councillor inquiries and notices of motion. Anybody have anything to bring forward before I start? Okay, so I have several things that I'd like to just bring up, and they're not so much notices of motion as they are inquiries. First concerns the auditor's report. We ought to date yet to receive the auditor's report on the financial state.
We have been in touch with Mr. Markell, as well as the folks that did, were here to perform the audit in April. There is a bit of a delay with respect to reconciliation of the tangible capital assets. The treasurer was away last week, and I'm not sure she's had opportunity to review anything today, so I would expect that we'll be seeing it very soon, but we have certainly hoped it would be done before noon.
Okay, and so that means that we're probably gonna miss the June council meeting, does it?
I'm actually hoping to meet the June council meeting.
Oh, there's still a possibility?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can get an update of that next Monday then. Okay, then the next thing is, so at the end of June, we'll be six months into the year, and I'm assuming that some period during July, we can get a report on the sewer and water systems, the revenue and expenses of those systems. That, we can get that for the Administration Finance meeting in July. I'd just like to monitor that, make sure that we're, that we're gonna be okay with revenue exceeding expenses on those three systems. So I'm asking that that go on as admin finance item for July?
Through the chair, if you want that for the first six months, it'll have to be at Public Works in admin finance, I just got, instead of admin finance. I just got, today I got the May, May's revenues from RSL, so that was just today. So that would have been, like, I wouldn't have been able to create or enter the revenue for, for June if I don't get it until, like, I can push to try and get it earlier than June 11th, but.
Okay, so, okay, so it doesn't matter to me which week?
So it might be better if I do it in Public Works, just because I'll, it'll give me the extra week to be able to get the, the revenue numbers from RSL.
Okay. Is that, those revenue figures that you got today, are they?
Mid, mid-May.
Mid-May.
They go from mid-April to mid-May.
On the billing day.
Correct.
Okay.
They always do mid-month.
Well, I'm just trying to think, January, February, March, April, so you've got the April numbers, maybe make a third of, that's four, that's a third of the year, maybe make the report for just a third of the year, it's easy to multiply by third.
Do by a third instead.
Yeah, so if we could get the report as of April the 30th, and then you could do work on that and have that ready, and we'll forego the half-year report until a little bit later. The other thing that I was looking for is a year-end review of arena cost, revenue versus expenses. I like to have that tied up a little bit for continuing discussions with other parties. And then the last thing I'd like to ask about, and just give the CIO a chance to address it, is we're now drafting a new JRDR Drain Bylaw to replace the bylaw, the other night, the 2015 bylaw. So my question is, do you have any idea when that'll come forward?
The drainage referee has recommended that we have Mr. Robinson review the work that was done as, as, if I can, if I can say this. The 2015 bylaw that has been declared invalid was for two parcels of work. We've reviewed the one parcel and agreed, the referee has ruled, we haven't agreed, but the referee has ruled that the, that the cost for that portion was accessible to a single owner. The second portion has not been ruled on yet, and the drainage referee has recommended that we have Mr. Robinson take a look at that work and determine whether or not it was indeed maintenance, and if it was, then we can move forward with the new bylaw under that circumstance. But we know Mr. Robinson's very busy, and we know that that may not happen instantaneously. So my suggestion is that, that, that whole project is going to take several months to get, to get finalized.
Okay, so it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be soon then?
No.
Okay, anybody else got anything under council inquiries and notices of motion? Hearing none, about to move on. And item number nine is the mayor's report, just a couple of things here. So first of all, a little report on Greenergy. And Greenergy had a booth at the Business Showcase and Expo. I was able to visit it a couple of times during the, the two days, just to see how things were going. And I had a note today from New Brunswick, Veronique, who seems to be in charge of the communications. Wanted to stop you from, thank for stopping by our booth at the Business Expo this weekend and taking the time to meet Virginia and both Marks, or two chaps named Mark. We greatly appreciate your support. I'm being told that everyone was very positive and supportive of our project, and that Johnstown has some of the nicest welcoming folks, sharing the pictures, the team took, so she just sent me a couple of pictures. But that seems to be coming along very well, and there's another little addendum to that. And it comes in the form of a, an email that she sent to Clayton on June the 6th, and I'm just going to share that email with council and, as well. Mike, that's Mike Healy, mentioned, then she's addressing us to Clayton, mentioned that you'll be meeting with Mayor Seo on Friday, and asked, I share with you, the jump in traffic we noticed to our rail-to-road YouTube video of cargo flow. So two weeks ago, there were five hundred views of the YouTube video. There are now two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five views of the video. The video has been up for over nine months, and we had no other announcement or changes to promote the video other than Johnstown. This leads us to believe that the increase in traffic is due to the Johnstown website being up and people watching the video that explains the concept in further details. We have not received any inquiries from the website. So two thousand views, no inquiries to the website, and a very good weekend at the Business Showcase and Expo. And Clayton tells me that negotiations are getting down to the tough stages. A lot of the, a lot of the physical details are worked out, now it gets down to the money part. So we'll see what happens there. Okay, so now just a little bit, bit of a brief report on Port Day. We had originally been told that Griffin would attend Subject Operational Requirements. It was Subject Operational Requirements, was drawn, withdrawn on Friday, replaced by Corporal Tethers CV, which is the same police boat that we had last year, but at least we have a ship. So we had originally talked about a reception on the Friday evening for the ships, hoping that there would be two. There's only gonna be one, and it's gonna be a small one with a small crew. At this point, as of four o'clock today, I still don't know how many people from Corporal Tether will attend the reception. So it's gonna be very small, and it's gonna be upstairs in Building B at the port. And I'm just gonna restrict the invitations to members of the Port Management Committee, Port Staff, the CIO. It'll be a very small group, and if it turns out that, that Corporal Tether is not going to arrive early enough in the day to have a 6:30 reception, we're gonna cancel the whole concept. So that just puts you in the picture on that. So Port Day program for Saturday, June the 16th, the gates will open at 10, as has been reported. The port tours will start as the gates open. We'll have three conveyances again, as we know, we got the two conveyances from the Spencile Agricultural Society, like to thank them for helping us out again this year. So there are two conveyances with their drivers. And then we have the third conveyance that, that the port bought from, from Granville Park, and gonna have the same driver pulling that one as well. Opening speeches at 11:30, and there'll be quite a number of speeches, actually, more than, more than other years, but we're just asking them to confine their remarks to readings of two minutes or so. Now, also, something that we're working on, and it hasn't been totally confirmed yet, but the port is making a presentation of two thousand dollars to Gordon Brown's pet project, which was this ice pad at Ganon Aqui. And I've asked his brother Jeff if he would come to Port Day, so that we could present it during the opening ceremonies. Now, he's indicated that yes, he'll come, so that part of it is, I think, okay, we just have to finalize it, so we can, we can sort of expect that to happen during the opening ceremony. So we can sort of expect that to happen during the opening ceremonies as well. That'll enable us to get all the members of the Port Management Committee in the picture. And I'm asking them as well if they can supply us with some sort of a paper handout where people that don't want to make a donation via the website can have a little piece of paper that says donations can be made by check to this address at this number. That'll give people another opportunity. At the Business Showcase, the port had a booth at the Business Showcase where you could spin a wheel to win a tour of the elevator. So there were thirty-six elevator tours awarded to thirty-six people at the Business Showcase. And then we'll do about another twenty-five or thirty during Port Day itself at the port. So we will have a very full day of port, of elevator tours, and a very full day of around-the-surface tours. Now, with Port Day out of the way, now the bad news, good news. So we tried very, very hard to get a frigate to visit us for Port Days. Didn't happen. But we received notification today that HMCS Moncton, which is a frigate based in Halifax, wants to come alongside the port from twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth July. And they've obviously been asked by another party, we don't know who, to be in attendance for an event that we're not aware of, and they're just looking for a berth. So we're trying to confirm arrangements that they're really talking about Port of Johnstown, because they asked us if we were Port of Prescott, which tells us that the Navy still doesn't know the difference between Port of Johnstown and Port of Prescott. But anyway, Robert's been working with them, and we hope to have that tied up in the next few days for twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth July. Under new business, we have a new business relocated to the township on the first of June at the Hasiak property, which is where the St. Lawrence Printing Building is. I've been in to visit them twice, missed them both times. They're... Both the principals are out of the office almost continuously. They haven't fully moved in yet, but very happy to have them attend. Wanted to report that I attended the Upper Kenan District School Board. Counselor Morell was there. We attended the, what was supposed to be the Corporal Accommodation Review Meeting in Kemphill on June the eighth. Now, they reviewed with us their policy concerning partnerships, sponsorships, and/or co-op ventures. And we found from the presentation that neither Centennial School nor South Edward School is on the list of schools that are eligible for those consultations, which leads us to believe that those two schools are in an advantageous position as of this point in time, but we haven't got that clarified yet. Item number seven, the Grenville Mutual Building. I think I did report that I've met the new owner, Peter Cornell, at the site. They're doing a lot of renovations and the repair work, and he hopes to have his crew moved in by the end of this month. And I've invited him to address council sometime during the month of July, and I think he'd be happy to come, and I know he would be glad to meet him. Also, at the school board meeting in Kemphill on Friday, the CIO and I raised the issue with trustee McAllister of why the Benson School lands have not been publicly advertised for sale. And we're just interested to know what's delaying that process, and we're gonna be spending a little bit of time looking into that. And then the last thing on the agenda, so I'm gonna ask if the CIO would come forward, because on last Friday, two Fridays ago, I was invited to the Fort Town Night Run Annual General Meeting. Now, it was a Friday night in Prescott. Very difficult to get me to a meeting on Friday night. But in any case, if you'd like to come forward, they made this little presentation to the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal because of the support we give them for the Fort Town Night Run. So I was happy to receive it on behalf of the township, but it does belong to the township, so I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will find a spot for it.
And that's my report. And so now, item number ten on the agenda is a question period. If any, questions? And we have no closed session this evening. And item number twelve on the agenda is adjournment. The chair's looking for a motion to adjourn. I'm gonna take Mr. Robertson and Mr. Bradley.
You go ahead.
Those in favor? Motion is carried.